I do ask that you silence or put on vibrator your cell phones and keep all side our conversations to an absolute minimum to respect the business of the town. And I would like to invite Pastor Sacode to the podium. Would you like to? Uh, this is an invitation, not invitation, it's implication. Please stand with us if you choose to.
Father, we just thank you for the opportunity just to come before you today, Lord. Uh, God, we thank you for being able to come together and do the business of the town, Lord. Uh, God, we ask you to be with all that's said and done here today, Lord, and just lead us in guidance as you would have us to be, Lord, and in all things as said and done in order, Lord. Uh, God, we thank you now for this time and this opportunity, Lord, to serve you in what we've come to do here today. Uh, in the name of Jesus, we pray, and amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, sir. All right, I'll now call for any additions or additions to the agenda. Name none, I'll call for motion to approve the agenda. Commissioner Pacios?
Salute.
Commissioner Chablot, any discussion? All in favor? Uh, motion carries. We'll now entertain a motion to approve the consent items, the draft minutes of the March twenty-fourth, twenty-twenty-fifth work session and, uh, bill payment contracts for our kiosk. Um, Mayor Porter? Uh, so, Commissioner Lackman?
Sir.
Any discussion? All in favor? Uh, motion carries. All right, we are now on to our public comment section. So please be mindful that, uh, public comments are kept two, three minutes total and the board is not authorized to respond to any comments during that time. That's why I'd like to invite Mr. James McIver to the podium. Please state your name and address for the record.
Thank you. I'm Lord Alderman, Madam Mayor. Good evening, all. I'm James McIver, reside at two-two-three Cecil Avenue here in Spring Lake. I'm gonna practice by saying my comments are not, are not criticism. Don't criticize my town, that's a, that's for, that's for another venue. But, my question and my concern is, um, I live on the corner, statistically, I'm on the corner of Cecil and Milton Streets. What you're saying is the aftermath of a rain? Um, not even a hard rain, but a good, good storm rain here in the, um, in the Cumberland County, Spring Lake area. Uh, that, uh, the picture on the left, uh, demonstrates that the water is almost to my door, back, the side door, it's actually past the front door. Uh, that rain, you can't get the full context there, but it's about three to four inches deep. It's not just a little thing coming through. Uh, the, uh, the center picture is a fence, uh, the side of two-two-one and two-two-three. And the one on the far right is sort of an outtake, uh, one coming from the car that is showing two-two-three and then showing the house on Milton Street. And really, my question is going to be, uh, what is the plan for clearing out the drainage ditch? The drainage piece next to two-two-three and two-two-one? Uh, just to give you a little, little background, um, I had, I had an agreement with the town of Spring Lake and I guess if the, I should've known, I should've written down his name, but I had a little agreement back in two thousand with, um, with, with the gentleman here in Spring Lake. I'll clean it out once, Spring Lake will clean it out twice. And, um, let's just say I'm not forty-nine years old anymore. Okay, all, all joking aside, I, I'm just not, I can't get down there and do it like I used to, so. I'd like to get a sense of, I don't have a picture, I apologize for that, but just the, the picture on the left, if you go a little bit further, you would be able to see the drainage. We have some really slow drainage. Back in the seventies, it was a real mess and it fixed, and now we're here, and I think I've got to be at three minutes now. And I thank you for your indulgence, so again, my question is gonna be, uh, can the town formulate a strategy to clean out that area or rotor-rueter it? So when it comes out, and I think it actually comes out on the Far Street, it comes out on Mac Street, somewhere on Mac Street, if I recall. Thank you, thank you for your time. Shall I stand here and wait for a comment, or, as you said, you're not obligated to comment? But comment on the Air Force, help the Air Force out today. Thank you. Amen.
All right, we'll now invite Pastor England to the podium. Please state your name and address when you have to come.
My name is Steve England, uh, church is at two-oh-one South Main. Um, it's just a, uh, a thank you, uh, I wanted to say, uh, to our town, uh, to the community. Uh, for everyone to come out, we had a, uh, not this past Saturday, but the Saturday before, we had our annual car show, uh, and it was a wonderful time. It was a wonderful time, we had, uh, fifty-seven cars, I might make the mistake, uh, fifty-seven cars. Uh, you can see there in the, uh, in the pictures there, that it was a pretty good packed place. I do want to also, uh, make one special, uh, thank you to our mayor for coming out and being a part of that and, uh, giving out her Mayor's Choice Trophy. Uh, the gentleman that got that, he, uh, he was one of our older members and, and he was much appreciated to that, so he wanted me to make sure I, I told you thank you for that. I did see, uh, several of our commissioners come out and I want to thank y'all for being there, taking the time to be, uh, to be out there in the community anyway. So, that's all I had to say, thank you so much.
Thank you. All right, we will move on to our, uh, first presentation, and I hope you just give your appreciation, Commissioner Lackman.
Thank you. Mr. Crowe, do you have the microphone, please? We didn't play this one. You did. I did. But, uh, we're here tonight to celebrate your sister. That's a young woman that has, has been a, a wonderful addition to the town of Spring Lake for her hard work and providing quilts to each of the three Veterans of the Year. And as you said, she's working on the Veteran of the Year this year. So, from us to you, through, through you to her, please tell her thank you very much. And the town has a little recognition that we would like to, to present her through you. She's gonna be so. Look, the board. For the audience out here, we've done a certificate of recognition for a lady who doesn't even live in North Carolina. This is a lady that has hand-stitched, and if any of you all know, the labor of love that goes into hand-stitching, not one, but currently three, working on the fourth one. And each Veteran of the Year, there's a, a little special engraving, or embroidery, that she does, to make that quilt even more special for that person. So, for that, I'd like to present this through you to her. And also one of the coveted Mayor's Spring Lake coins that we've got here. And then if she wears, she's got one here at Spring Lake, and this will say graciousness, the, the thank yous that come from not only the town, but the four veterans that are here. So, I'd like to present this through you to her. Thank you. And we'll go over here and get your card. And it just so happens we're supporting our, our impact shirts tonight. And the impact is our Military Veterans Affairs Advisory Committee.
One, two, three.
Thank you, sir. You were. Thank you, sir.
Hello, guys.
Yeah.
I would like to also take a point of privilege. Um, I am incredibly proud to recognize the Alpha, Alpha Gamma Sigma Alumni Chapter of Alpha Beta Sigma Fraternity. I'm trying to make, I take my time, I don't wanna mess up. Phi, Phi Beta Sigma Fraternity, I'm sorry, I'm slowing down, because that's it, I gotta get it right, so. The Alpha, Alpha Gamma Sigma Alumni Chapter of the Phi Beta Sigma Fraternity Incorporated. Is that right? Yes. For their outstanding work and well-deserved recognition with the twenty-twenty-five Sigma Beta Club Award and the Social Action Award. Your unwavering commitment to mentoring our youth, serving the community and uplifting Spring Lake through education and outreach, and consistent action has not gone unnoticed. These honors are reflection of your heart, your hard work and the powerful legacy you're building right here in our town. Thank you for being a beacon of brotherhood, of service, and of excellence. Spring Lake is better because of you. Thank you so much. I would like to, uh, give you a coin, one of, as Commissioner Lackman said, one of these coveted Mayor's Coins. They are few and far between, but I wanna make sure that we are honoring, uh, those who are not just taking care of our town, but taking care of the youth, who are going to be the ones to continue to take care of our town. So if you all or one of you on the council accepts this coin, I'd love to give it to you. Thank you, sir. If you'd like to, uh, let's get a picture first, I'm, I'm in my blue today. I'll let you guys line up and I'm gonna jump somewhere in here. Um, all right. Come right here, there we go. Yes, yes, please, I want you guys to say something, both of you.
Oh, I don't wanna say anything.
I mean, the, the Sigma Betas and the social action, both of you guys, that's two distinct honors, two distinct awards.
I would love to steal the spotlight, but I'll, I'll remember to, that will be our first. First, um, thank you for taking the opportunity to recognize what we're doing here in the Spring Lake, uh, chapter here in Spring Lake, North Carolina. In twenty-ten, we saw that there was a need, not just for the youth, but for service, and we wanted to meet that need, and we met that need. But I would be remiss if I, if I say thank you for recognizing the youth. Thank you for recognizing the future doctors. Thank you for recognizing the future lawyers. Thank you for recognizing the future presidents of the United States of America. Because you are recognizing them, they are being recognized within themselves. They are not hurting people, they are not meant to be in jail. They are and will be the future. Because of you, because of what you're doing today, you are sowing into them. This is foreground. We recognize it as a chapter, we recognize it because it's in Spring Lake, we recognize it because of parents that are here that are supporting their child, and they are allowing us the opportunity to impart it to them. So we salute you and we thank you for what you're doing, and we don't take it by any means. And we don't, we hold it to our hearts and we humbly say, thank you for what you're doing today, thank you for what you're gonna do tomorrow, thank you, Mayor. Because every time you call, we've been there, every time you call, we've been there. And we appreciate what you're doing here in the town of Spring Lake. So for you, we step back and we salute you and we thank you for all that you're doing for us, and thank you for recognizing us on today, and I thank the citizens. Because these young men are making remarkable adjustments and things in the community. If you wanna know what they're doing, like I'm age, because they are always on our page. But thank you again for what you're doing, thank you for acknowledging us, and I don't ask the opportunity to acknowledge you. On behalf of myself, the parents at our Sigma Beta Club, we do wanna thank you. Uh, anytime we're doing anything, you're always there for the support. I'm June fourteenth, we will go and receive our award in North Carolina Central for our regional conference. Hopefully, we'll take the rest of the year as well. I cannot stand alone, I have my advisor here who's amazing. Uh, it, it's a lot of paperwork. When those kids are in the community, they're working hard, I'm always fussing, checking grades. I just called a parent the other morning to check on her son, and I could tell she was pleased. So we're working hard, we're doing some things, but thank you for your support.
We will now carry on with some new business. Um, again, the item eighty-eight, ordinance number twenty-five, twenty, twenty-five oh one, an ordinance declaring the world culture for First Friday on Main. Um, again, this is for our First Friday on Main series, um, that we intend to do this year. Um, and so we have to make sure that we're safe and close the roads, uh, for your safety. And so, uh, I'd like to put that towards the board for our motion to approve the ordinance, so we get it sent over to DOT. Um, in ample time, we're, um, hoping to do our First Friday beginning in August. Um, keep, keep saying why August, because we don't wanna compete with, uh, Fourth of July. Um, and we don't have a place here in the town to do fireworks, so I don't want to, you know, I wanna make sure that we can all still celebrate, um, Independence Day with fireworks. And so we'll begin in August. So, uh, I'd like to say we'll approve the ordinance for ordinance number twenty-five oh one. Commissioner Thompson?
Salute.
Commissioner Chablot?
I say yes.
Any discussion? All in favor? Uh, motion carries, thank you, guys. All right, we'll now do a, uh, resolution petitioning requesting annexation to twenty-four, twenty-eight, twenty-four fifty, and twenty-four sixty-eight Milton Highway, uh, and I am willing to access to, uh, resort.
Mayor, in front of you, um, I've done a little research on this stuff. And, um, just to be very, very clear, I don't think that the area is contiguous to town. Therefore, we would have to follow a non-contiguous area annexation process and procedure. Um, I think it's outs, it's outside the limits of our water and sewer boundaries, it's outside the city limits. Um, and therefore, I think the cost to, basically, once the, once the clerk certifies the application, we have to engage a feasibility study to look at the cost of that. And one of the annexation procedures is that within sixty days, we must pay, come up with a capital expense item for providing the same level of services, in this case, we think about water and sewer services. And we are in receipt of, not that this is the same level of project, but we have a current bid for a sewer line replacement project that's roughly about two-hundred forty-five to three-hundred twenty-five dollars per foot or in excess of roughly nine-hundred within your feet. And the cost combined of that is about five-hundred thousand dollars. And so, that's just a quick surface look at this. So even if you approve a resolution for annexation, that will engage the staff and look into a feasibility study. And I think feasibility study will reveal that it's probably not a good idea.
Any questions that come to the board? Mayor Porter?
Thank you, Mayor. Um, Mr. Rory, um, so I, uh, see in here, it says that they are contiguous to the towns. Who made that, uh, determination?
It's from an old document, and I just think it's missing there in error.
Okay.
So, um, from the statute itself. For purpose of this section, the area shall be deemed contiguous if at the time of the position submitted, such that an area either cubs directly on the municipal boundary or separated from the municipal boundary by way for the street or street right away, or grid or regular, or right way or down way. Um, that's why I would think it needs to be definition of contiguous and separate, not a loss, a loss. And we do have an annexation out there that was, uh, annexed as non-contiguous sometime ago.
No, I remember.
That doesn't necessarily now have to be contiguous, if we use a non-contiguous area annexed at that point. Now that it cubs up to a non-contiguous area, it's still non-contiguous.
Any other questions that come to the board? I'm now entertain a motion to approve or deny resolution, uh, twenty-twenty-five oh three. Mayor Porter?
Um, I make a motion to deny this, um, request.
Is there a second? Commissioner Pacios?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? Oh, excuse me, hold on, I'm reading. Commissioner Lackman?
Thank you, ma'am. Um, I have to agree, we've been working very hard on trying to, to improve our services within town. As many of you all know, that we've had a number of water leaks. And for us right now to undertake a parcel of land that's outside the town, uh, really just, it's, it's, it's unfair to you as the residents to, to shortchange you by trying to fix what you have lived here for seventy, forty years, for forty years, for ten years, for ten days. Uh, and until we can get that done, I think we, we got to work internally before we can work externally.
All in favor? Uh, motion carries. Uh, to deny the, uh, annexation. Excuse me, the resolution for annexation. Excuse me. I'll move on to deny item eighty, the twenty-twenty-five amendment to the sales tax distribution, uh, agreement. So, as you know, we have been preparing for the change from per capita to ad-alarm, uh, sales tax collection through the Cumberland County. Um, this was a decision made by the Cumberland County Commissioners, uh, at, that they're, they have the authority to make these changes, and this has been a process that began back in, uh, two thousand and three, um, which is now, exactly, which is now finally, um, at a point of closure, uh, so that we can go ahead and do the transition. So what has happened was, um, the three largest municipalities, Hope Mills, Spring Lake, and Fayetteville, all met together to discuss how we move forward with the local sales tax agreement, the impact that it had on each municipality and how we can work together to kind of lighten the load. Um, so through discussions with the Cumberland County Commissioners, they came up with, and, um, Mayor Fayetteville, Mayor Colvin came up with the idea through collaboration of, uh, working together to kind of, again, relieve some of that burden that were happening with the change. Uh, Spring Lake was going to take about a one-point-four-million-dollar, uh, loss to our sales tax revenue, which is, again, it's huge, but we're, we're trying to navigate it now. Uh, what the county is proposing is that they, uh, well, excuse me, give me a little bit of backing. Uh, in twenty-twenty-two, they froze our sales tax, um, at, uh, they capped it at whatever came in that year is what the town will receive, but going forward for twenty-three and twenty-four into twenty-five, until the, uh, ad-alarm tax change happened, they would allow, we would, uh, keep getting our twenty-twenty-two rate, but any overage would go back to the county. So for twenty-two, twenty-three, twenty-four, and twenty-five, we have been giving any overage over our twenty-two year to the county a hundred percent. What the county has offered to do is give us back fifty percent of our twenty-twenty-five's tax overage, uh, which will come at, it's a win for the town, um, because again, we're not spending as much money as we would have spent, uh, for this change. So I'm requesting that the board, uh, approve this new resolution, um, allowing us to go forward with the property or sales tax changeover, but authorizing the, or accepting the, uh, Commissioners', um, offer to give us back fifty percent of what we paid for fiscal year twenty-one. Uh, if any questions, so, Mayor Porter?
Thank you, Mayor. Um, did we have a number for what we, um, we could give back?
Three-hundred-and-forty-thousand thousand.
Commissioner Pacios?
I know one of the questions was that they somehow are trying to figure out that we had incorrect amount, uh, or I believe it was twenty-twenty-two, is that what the, um, there was a question about that, right?
Let me answer you that. Uh, yes, sir, we had met a couple times with Fayetteville and Hope Mills to, uh, question how the county had calculated that. The two issues were whether it was the gross distribution or the net distribution, there's a big difference. The other question was, uh, would, uh, the whole harmless be included? Um, Fayetteville was wanting to hire some CPAs to redo those calculations. Uh, they came to the conclusion that this has been going on, as the mayor said, from since two thousand and twenty-three. So we have a twenty-year precedent of everybody agreeing to the way the county has calculated the difference and the amount of reimbursement each year. And so since we have gone along with it for twenty years, to question it now would be futile. And Fayetteville has said they're going to give up, uh, trying to, uh, dispute the calculation. So we're just gonna leave it as it is. Uh, normally, we would have paid back, uh, six-hundred eighty, six-hundred ninety thousand for the coming year. That's how much our sales tax has grown in the last three years. Now, we only have to pay back half of that, about three-hundred forty-five to three-hundred fifty thousand. So, they are, they're agreeing. Thanks for this, so please accept it before they take it. Thank you for the clarification.
Uh, Commissioner Chablot?
Uh, well, I have a question in the audience, but to answer that, but what happens after we receive the money this year?
It's a one-time payment, just to kind of smooth things over. Once that, that money comes in, there will be no more, we'll switch to ad-alarm, okay? Commissioner Lackman?
Thank you, Mayor. So a young man out here, get involved in your, your local governments, whether in his town, whether in his county. I will tell you that the county, the new elective leadership that's out there really has listened to the municipalities and is, is trying to do what's best for a couple of them now, as we look to do what's best for, for Spring Lake out there. So I do applaud the, the chair and the members of the Cumberland County Board, uh, for, for taking this, this huge leap of faith and working with us on this, so, thank you.
So, uh, I'm not paying the motion? Okay, um, Mayor Porter?
I make a motion that we approve this new, uh, tax agreement.
First one.
First one. I make a motion that we approve this, uh, don't you say it, uh, you say it. I make a motion that we approve the twenty-twenty-five amendment to the sales tax distribution to the revenue agreement.
Commissioner Chablot?
I say yes.
Any discussion? All in favor? Uh, motion carries. There you go. All right, well now we'll, uh, on to it, should that item eighty, uh, discussion regarding rebranding and upping the town level on steel, Commissioner Lackman?
Thank you very much.
I don't have a copy of the logo. Okay, well, I'll just give you. So, our town was established on April 9, 1951. And since then, in 1978, there was a contest that was held. And the logo that was chosen was the one that you see right up here, and now it's appearing on the screen here. Mayor Hobson, the board of Alderman, along with the Chamber of Commerce, got together, had a contest that was done. You can imagine the excitement that was done throughout the town, the schools, as they looked through this. There was a guy named Martin Holden, I like that name, Martin is a good name. And he was the president of the Chamber of Commerce, and he appeared before the mayor in Alderman on June 12 to present his studies. The flag and the motto was done. Patty Adams, Jay Bird, and Juanita Garnell were the ones that were recognized for this logo that we had since 1978 that's up there. Unity for Prosperity was instantly hit. The motto, the source of it, unclear, but it attributes the inspiration and effort of all the students, the faculty, and the chamber, and those that were involved. The town's motto and flag survives today, and is a testament of the vision of those students demonstrated through wisdom and the adults who are adopting what today continues to be an example of local pride and continued commitment and collaboration as a pursuit of prosperity by all those community members there. So this was done back in 1978, and that was taken off of our town website under Fun Facts. So you can see that, that's out there. So since 1978, the unity for prosperity has stood forty-seven years. And so as we are looking to go forward, the population back in 1951, and these are Google stats that I pulled off there, so it's not necessarily the census stats that are there. You can see our population has relatively stayed the same over the time. I can't answer for what was done back in 1978, but there's been multiple attempts to sway local and state officials, court cases, and the answer remains the same. That the three people that came up with it are the ones that continue to get the recognition for that. In my opinion, because you look up there, you see Fort Bragg, and you see Pope Air Force Base that was the one that was assembled. We went from Fort Bragg to Fort Liberty, and then we're back to Fort Bragg. Back in March 11th, March 1st, 2011, Pope Air Force Base became Pope on the airfield. And so as we look to our birthday next year, we'll be seventy-five years old. I kind of envisioned doing something a little different with the town. So where do we go from here? Do we keep the same logo that we have and continue with where we're asking? Or do we look at rebranding into a fresh start? Is this something that we want to open up to the community? Is this something that we want to open back up to the schools and be able to come up with a new motto for Spring Lake that's taking us into the future? So as I look at it, we look at, sort of, public comments for the design. They're down to the 2035, and pretty before the board, the board took a look at it, and it's public involved in it. And on May, on April 9, 2026, we'll have a big rebranding of our motto and our logo, whatever that may be. So as we look at here for prosperity, what does that mean to me? This is something that we as a board, if we look to go forward with this, this is something that would engage the citizens, and get you all involved in what our future, as well as your future, will be here in Spring Lake. And so to answer some of the questions, as we look at vehicles and changing out the logos on that, the current one that's on our vehicles will remain the same, and then we'll give the vehicles to replace that as we go.
Okay, awesome. So this definitely has been a topic of discussion for the past few years, as wanting to, you know, kind of move forward, modernize. And this isn't just a Spring Lake thing. If you notice, in the past few years, the county has rebranded, Fayetteville has rebranded. This has been a discussion that's been talked about at the county level. And so we met with distinctly Fayetteville, who's trying to put together an initiative for the entire community, or, excuse me, for the entire county, to kind of put us into this kind of logo similarity convention scheme with all the municipalities. The number one question is always, what is the cost associated with this? And of course, we know that, to be very transparent, funds are distributed by its spring lake. And so that would be number one concern is, how do we fund this initiative? Especially if we're looking to try and do something by next year? This is something that the town can take on without the county, or without distinctly Fayetteville. They're hiring the experts, bringing in the coast watchers alone, who are expensive. So that, again, that's my concern, is funding this. And are we, in the words of Senator McInnes, "outputting our headlights" by trying to take on this initiative if the county's already trying to push the initiative? Those are my concerns. Commissioner Placius?
Thank you. So I love this idea. I think that we do have to get to a point where we are not only rebranding, but creating a vision for the future. And if we can get a new generation to help us move this forward, I'm all in favor of that. And like the mayor said, this has been brought up for years, and that the county, distinctly Fayetteville, has, you know, started this. But it's been years, and we got nowhere so far. So that's why I feel like, maybe this is something Spring Lake can, you know, tackle, or see what its interest is. And I want to see if people, business owners, residents, you know, our stakeholders, see if this is something they're interested in. If not, then I think that we can move on from it. But I think there are people out there that feel like, what does unity for prosperity mean? You know, the so-called creator of this phrase says that she's the only one that even knows what that phrase is. Well, that's a problem, you know? And so I shouldn't get too much into that part of it, and legal stuff that came from yours as a result of it. But anyway, I'm in favor of just seeing what the engagement is, seeing what the interest is to move forward with it. I think that's, thank you, Mayor.
Deborah, thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. I'm probably the only one on this stage who was in school at the time of the announcements of the winter's. I was actually in, at the Spring Lake Middle School when the winners were announced. It was done by the Chamber of Commerce, that no longer, the one that did it no longer exists. I will say I have taken public criticism, and public criticism, because I will not say that my individual classmate was the actual only winner. But I am interested in rebranding, but I believe we should look at it from a community aspect and see if we can get some businesses to help fund it. I don't think we should put that on the town. I only think we should put any of the work on our staff, because they're already overworked, and some of them may burn their hay. But I think it's something that maybe we need some people and businesses to come together, and this happens, and I would love to see a new, you know, a new brand here in Spring Lake. But I don't, again, I don't think the town will be able to fund it, because we're only trying to fund all positions.
Commissioner Placius? Should we have a follow-up? All right. Okay. Is there any other? Will now move on to our budget amendment, VA 17. Mr. Overdue?
Yes, proposed budget amendment here. Some of it's just to move a little money around within departments, but we have some expenses that are running, or wanting to run over budget. Last year, our average water consumption from Fayetteville Public Works was about nineteen million gallons. So far this year, it is averaging twenty-three million gallons, and Fayetteville Public Works did a twenty-one percent increase in the rate. So the million dollars that we budgeted to buy water through nine months, we have spent almost all of it. So it's averaging about one hundred and seventeen, eighteen thousand a month. We have three more months to go. So we need to increase our budget for the purchase of water by three hundred and fifty thousand. Also, we have had new, one of the reasons that gallons has gone up is we've had numerous water leaks that Deanna and her staff and Jason have spent most of the year trying to fix. We had two hundred and eleven thousand in the budget to repair water and sewer lines. We've spent all of it. And so, and there's plenty more holes still left to patch. So Mr. Rory requested that I add three hundred thousand to that line. And we may not spend three hundred thousand between then and June, but we will spend it sometime in the near future. So that's that. And also up the legal fees for Mr. Porter to continue his case against Plush, because we didn't have a whole lot in the budget for that. And then the kiosk, the original request that we had was for fifty thousand dollars. That did not include the seven thousand dollars for the warranty for three years. So we're going to increase that by eight thousand. So I request that you, and then the other thing is retiring insurance. We need to transfer some money to Fund 75 to pay the retiring insurance premium, because the amount, some of the premiums were posted to the general fund by mistake, so I correct that. So that's all of my budget amendment.
A bunch of amendments, but very necessary, a bunch of amendments.
Yes, and a lot of it is coming from fund balance and water fund.
How, how like that? How much of it is, how much is in the fund balance for the enterprise?
There's about five million in there. This budget amendment takes five hundred and eighty-five thousand from fund balance in the water fund. It takes, let's see, thirty-seven thousand more fund balance from the general fund.
So about ten percent, ten percent drop in the fund balance of the water supply.
I'm not in favor of motion to approve budget amendment 17. Mayor, what's that? Commissioner Thompson? I say, any discussion? All in favor? I have a motion here. As you guys see, we have massive water leaks in our, we're trying to get it done now. We're trying, and just bear witness, because as you can see, they're trying to piece building together this thing, massive undertaking to try and repair, or repair these water leaks. So bear with us, bear with your water pressure, and sometimes intermittent shut-offs. It's because we are trying to do the right thing, and not because we're not taking care of the system. We're repairing a dilated system which sometimes causes more issues. So again, please bear with us. John's going to fix it all next week. I'm joking, so anybody take this serious, just to give it for the record. All right, we'll now move to item 8F. Board to approve the request to apply for the viable utilities for the grain. Mr. Rory?
I'm going to turn this over to Deanna, who is the water resources and storm lawyer.
All right, well, as you said, our utilities are, huh? Our utilities are in bad shape. They've been neglected for decades, and repairs have been done on them piecemeal, band-aids. So when we're getting the leaks now, we're trying to fix it properly, so it doesn't keep happening. One of the problems that we have is, of course, funding for it. But we found out about a viable utility reserve last month when we went to NCLM fiscal training that I would like to apply for. It's either a coriant or a low-interest loan, and that's determined by NCTUQ. The max that we can apply for is fifteen million dollars. I'm going to apply for the max. The, I was speaking with Jason Williams, who's now Public Works Director, to decide where that would best be spent if we get it. We want to repair valves first, because at this point, we have so many valves that are not working, that we have to turn off entire neighborhoods to fix a tiny leak in one spot. So by fixing the valves, we can better isolate from leaks, get them done faster without telling people at the annual wire, so it'd be off for 24 hours. Because we fixed this leak, that would pop up, you know, if you beat them. Why is Goodyear always being shut off? Why?
I know, I am.
Why, why is Broad Street out of water? So we have, we figured that if we could repair the valves first, we would be able to do a much better job of repairing everything else. So according to the NCLM, we have to ask for permission or approval to apply for a grant, as I'm here for today. I would like to apply this grant reserve loan however it is that it comes to us.
If I had a road, it would absolutely be yes. Because this is, again, very important. I do want to ask, is there any way the board can support? Are they asking for letters of support or endorsement, or anything official, or that would help the grant? If we did something like that?
At this point, I do not believe so. I'm still going through the three hundred something page, yes, handbook from them. So I will keep you updated, and I will be over here knocking on doors saying, can you do this for me? But as of right now, I've got part of the application done. There's certain things that they are asking for that I have to research on. But the deadline to apply for it is on the 30th of April. I will have it done.
All right, is there any questions or comments from the board? Commissioner Placius?
Thank you. And the, so grants sometimes have requirements attached to them.
There is no match.
No matches?
There is no match required.
Okay, thank you. And thank you for addressing this, Deanna and the rest of the town staff. We all know that there's a lot of issues that are going on in town, and we appreciate the citizens, you know, pulling the group. And it's not an easy thing when you're the one getting the water shut off. But of course, you understand that there are needs, and it's to hopefully stop bigger problems. I was reading an article today from Strong Towns about cities defaulting. Not in just debts, but cities defaulting in other debts, other debts being infrastructure, not having plans in place to take care of things. And when you don't have a plan for maintaining a road that you are paving, or sewer pipeline that you are laning, then you have issues that Spring Lake is facing today. And so I am in favor of applying for this grant, and I'll be praying that we are able to do it.
Thank you. All right, I'm not in favor of motion to, oh, I forgot your password. Deborah?
Thank you. I do have a question. I don't know, is this a one-time grant, or can we apply?
I believe what they said is that it's a one-time grant, but if they have the funding later on, they'll go ahead and redo it, and we can apply.
And I do want to say thank you all. I know how hard everyone's working, and it's a lot.
I appreciate it. Thank you.
I mean, the pressures felt right here on this floor, you know? We have some of the worst streets in the community. Mr. Rory?
Deanna, highlight again, I don't want it to be overlooked or just passed without a lot of thought. The, you said two things, it is either grant or a low-interest loan. And who determines which it is?
NCTUQ.
That's the maximum amount.
Uh, fifteen million.
So if the NCTEQ determines that it is a low interest loan, is that something we will have to seek approval through with the LGC?
Absolutely.
Okay, I just wanted to highlight that.
Yes, absolutely.
Alright, any other discussion? Comments from the board? Alright, I'm now entertain a motion to approve, uh, the request to apply for the viable utilities grant. Commissioner Chadwick?
I'd like to make a motion to approve the request to apply for the viable utilities grant.
Second, Commissioner Thompson?
I say.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
You heard that? That motion carried.
Thank you, thank you.
Fifteen million dollars.
We hope.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Right, see, only thing we saw a million more to go until we get that. Alright. Okay, that was the end of the word. Now I get to just talk about me, don't you? Mayors, okay, so um, last time you met, I was telling you about the town attending. We're getting ready to attend, uh, the municipal finance grant. You just heard from, um, Deanna how she got this viable utilities grant from that training. This is why we train. Because she wouldn't have found out about this fifteen million dollar drop in our infrastructure fund. Uh, this fifteen million dollars, we wouldn't have known about it. But that's what these trainings provide. They provide us access to resources. Uh, we had nineteen of your Spring Lake, uh, employees and elected officials there. Myself, Mayor Proten, and Commissioner Chadwick, along with, um, our manager, our department heads. We had a presence, um, at that, that financial training. Uh, but again, it shows you the dedication of your town staff and leadership. We really want to make sure that we're doing right by our tax dollars, we're good financial stewards. Um, and we're, we're using the money to mitigate the problems and increase the quality of life for our residents. And so I was very, very proud to be able to attend that training. Um, it was hosted by North Carolina League Municipalities. Um, and we hope to see them in our community more often because that was the first time they brought an official training here. Um, and so we want to welcome the league here more often so that we don't have to travel so far for that training and bring it here, bring the resources to us. Um, we have a meeting, uh, with Fayetteville and Hope Mills again. This will be a meeting with Mayor Proten and mayors from each municipality. This is something that we want to make ongoing because we want to again, uh, make sure that we're extending outside of our municipal borders to join hands with the rest of our county to bring back more resources. You guys, I say it all the time, it's a proverb I live by. If you want to go fast, go alone. But if you want to go far, go together. And so this is our attempt to join forces with our neighbors, with the other two largest municipalities in Cumberland County to see how we can better provide resources back to our community. So this meeting is happening on the seventeenth. Uh, any updates that come from that, I'll make sure we get it out to the board, the community as soon as possible. And I also want to make sure, um, that we remind you, please use your app. So any issue you see, and it does not have to just be your own issue. This town is all of ours. Your tax dollars pay for this town just like our tax dollars pay for this town. You see something, say something, do something. Um, take a picture with that app. It's on Android and App Store, childhood Spring Lake. You will probably not get a, a SASSA result if you just call the town or if you just stop by. But I guarantee you, when you use that app, it is date stamped. And then it is routed directly to the person it's supposed to get you. So now you have a record of when you reported this. We also have a record of when it was reported. And now we can track, track what needs to be done. You'll receive updates via email, uh, the email that you put into the app, letting you know when this, uh, problem was addressed. I challenge my Sigma Beta Club, take them out through the community. You see sites of litter or something that's uncat or anything, take them out. Show them how they can actively help us help our community. Uh, so again, this does not have to be just your own property, your own neighborhood. I intentionally ride around so I can make sure our police chief's phone goes off over and over and over again with reporting what's happening. So please, help us, help this town to be better. Um, and that's all I have. Mayor Proten?
Um, yes, I also, uh, want to say thank you to everyone, um, in the town of Spring Lake who went to that training because when I first got this board, I went to so many trainings alone. And, um, people didn't even know where Spring Lake was. So I am thankful that the manager had so many people there. Thankful to have Commissioner Van Gundy there and Commissioner Chadwick. And uh, excuse me, Anthony. So thankful to have them there along with some of our staff, uh, lead pack place. Um, so I actually told the league, I would like to bring it not only to Cumberland County, but over Fayetteville. But we have a great, uh, place that you can do it right here in the NCC here. Um, so I didn't want to mention that. Also, um, April twenty-ninth at six P M, uh, the Chair of Commonwealth County Commissioners, uh, Chief Kirk Beblier will be doing a state of the county. I think it's the first one I've seen done. And I, uh, encourage everyone to watch it because this is all of our county. Whether you're in the, uh, in the town, whether it's in Spring Lake or not, all of us belong to Cumberland County. So, um, I think that's important that we all, um, start to watch that.
Commissioner Thompson?
Um, the only thing, I have to read things really quick. Um, so on the seventeenth, um, which is this Thursday, from seven A M to two P M, they're gonna have a couple of crews up at, um, that people that's for the movies to, uh, um, to raise money for the Special Olympics. And then also on May third is when they have the, um, torch run for the Special Olympics. And it will be starting at nine A M and a walk four run. And also on Thursday, they will have, uh, T-shirts there for twenty-five dollar donations. And last thing, um, on the twenty-fourth of May at six P M, they have a community watch over at the Spring Lake, uh, senior sixties, April? April. I, I didn't stand corrected. April, that is. So that's all I have.
Should I call Commissioner Chadwick? Okay, go get the swap today. Alright. Commissioner Plasius?
Thank you. So, uh, we had our town cleanup on the fifth of April. And we had, uh, a big group of volunteers in total, including this awesome crew, the Shark Dress Crew. Uh, sixty-eight total people came out that day to clean up Spring Lake. That was awesome. So thank you, everybody who helped. A couple of quick, um, things to put out there. Uh, we had, uh, the Assault Helicopter Battalion of the Eighty-Second out helping with a good sized crew. Keep Harnett Beautiful donated a bunch of supplies and, uh, made that so easy for Deanna and us to organize that, uh, that day. Uh, United, my church had a good number of people helping out. Shameless plug, sorry. Sorry, not sorry. Um, our town commissioners, our town staff on there. And, uh, the town staff, of course, making it happen, uh, including the police and streets and Water Resources. Uh, morning jump for donating coffee as they always do during the town cleanup. And, uh, and then this, so thank you guys for doing your part. You guys, uh, we really appreciate you guys going the extra mile and, uh, and making sure that you guys don't pop anything. So, uh, just piggybacking off of them. But anyway, thank you. That's it, Mayor.
Thank you.
Goodbye, Mayor. Um, also, I have never seen sixty-eight people come up to a twice a year cleanup ever in the town of Spring Lake. If there has been, I don't know about it, but that, that was our largest showing that we've had for, for cleaning. Active duty soldiers. Mayor, not to be forgotten, the aviation battalion that came out there. Came out on a Saturday. They were going out to the field on Monday. You, you know, back in the field days, that if you got ready for the field, they came out to come over and help clean up our town. And, and the first lieutenant pilot, Ryan Murphy, he wants to come back. And so he's on, on board to, to come back. He's gonna bring the crew on May third as we do our cleanup there as well. So, uh, things are rolling. The adopted street program thing, Dr. Shortoff, all the folks out there. It's really the, the cleaning up of Spring Lake that's really taken hold and it is growing, focusing about. So, so thank you all for being a fine year and having the street from the way back then. Uh, got your sign up there. So now you've got the responsibility, young men, to, to go out there and keep springing up beautiful. Uh, our next cleanup is May third. We'll be back out there cleaning up things. Uh, Veterans Park, this is Rory, town staff. Out there laying saw on, on April ninth was a beautiful thing, lots of pictures. Uh, you saw it on Spring Lake matters, Mayor. What I hope you didn't, I put the picture first and the writing left. So that you saw and you remembered it, that our H R director was operating the skid loader. Mr. Rory? Our H R director, I don't want that to be lost, was operating the skid loader out there. So there's not, there's nothing to be lost in that. But Veterans Park, I'm walking, it's looking beautiful. Uh, Pastor, look at, it looks like you've got the first event at, at Veterans Park. So take the Q seven and I will tell you to park on the grass. Don't park on the sod. So as we go through here, pretty young man out here, splash pad opens up May first. So after summer jumps, our splash pad will be open for you all to be out there and for. Chief, I'll hopefully get your, get your run because I'll be out cleaning up the streets of Spring Lake. So just want to let you know that, that I will be there for that. Banner program, April seventeenth is the last day that we're accepting applications for the new banners that if you would like to have a military tribute banner blown on Main Street. And I challenge you all, once we fill up Main Street, we've got Ruth Street, we've got other streets, we've got Spring Street that we're gonna put that Pastor Steve Ingersoll has some banners up there that are first act, church ain't gonna know what you do. So we do have that, that, that we're doing. So April seventeenth, new banners. For those that have existing banners, you need to come in and sign a, a release waiver so that if your banner gets stolen, if it gets damaged, and it's only being flown out there, that you don't hold the town alive. So we've got that coming up there. Then I want to tell you again, splash pad opens May first. Mayor, that's, uh, that's all I've got.
Commissioner Chadwick?
I just want to give a shout out to, um, the Bobby the Sigma. My baby is part of this organization, so I am a very involved parent and I see the good deed that they are doing. So I just want to give a shout out and a congratulations on being recognized today. And that's all that I have today. No further updates.
But you want to write numbers, thank you. Mr. Rory?
Mayor, I want to take you talking about two things. One of them, the follow-up with, uh, Commissioner Lagman, the voters from Veterans Park. The, the goal from the beginning has not been to lay side, distribute rock, build a Zippo. The goal has been to maximize all the dollars, uh, the grant dollars, but to build a park. What we're doing is building a park. The purpose of a park is to create opportunities for people to have social collisions. And so we want people to run into each other at our parks. But to do that, we need to make sure that our parks are maintained, um, they're clean. Um, and we need to continue moving forward in, in that regard. So I would like to, um, recognize staff that have actually engaged, um, down the line, up the line, across the line, um, everybody from the side process to, you know, had it. What can I say, graduate? I see I got that in there. What can I say, graduate, give it to me, read it. What can I say, graduate, ac- ac- actually, um, installed the sprinkler system for the facility, for the park. It is manual. It is not automated. So the idea is that we did want to take and have repurposing water, the water to grass, with rain, but not a system. So some thoughts when you do this kind of stuff. Um, and it, you know, and how already asked forward at. So we're gonna make an injunction, um, with the, the brewery. Um, and have it where you can have overflow parking. Because it would be my hope to create a place where we can have more special events in regards to National Day of Prayer, uh, the different things that goes on, uh, even car shows, whatever it may be, as long as they don't park on them, right? They, uh, they'll make sure that's the way. And then, uh, finally, I want to talk about a little bit in terms of the cleanup and what's going on and some of the things that's happening throughout the town. Um, I remember, um, as Commissioner Cooper, Mayor Proten Cooper said that she was in school when they voted for that logo. While I was in school, and some of you will remember, the crying Indian. I know that may have been politically correct. If you remember the Indian looking over you, the, the streams and how litter they were. And so that resonates with me as a memory. When I pull up out of, uh, Walmart today, someone just takes this traction without believing. I just cannot imagine how people can do that. I just can't do it. I just can't, I can't swallow it. I just, I just can't imagine how they do that. Um, but you fast forward and you know that that's part of the culture and some of the things that happen for different people. And so, um, it's, it's a reflection of their raising, their upbringing, reflection of their environment. Uh, and I think that we need to be very cognizant of that. So to that end, uh, we're gonna be taking a special effort to try to curb or change or modify that behavior. I know of no way of modi- modifying the behavior if they keep getting what they can get from it. So, um, Lieutenant Sutton, Chief Darman, have taken an extra effort. Uh, they are installing cameras throughout the town. And it's not that we're trying to be big brother, but we're trying to modify behaviors. In one particular location, um, we have barricades to control access. We have signs that say, don't do this. Um, yet we have just over the course of the last week issued three trespass citations on city property that is properly marked and identified, to be specific, um, without authorization to enter and remain on the premises of the town of Spring Lake located in a certain location, which was posted in a manner reasonably likely to come to the attention of intruders without, with notice not to enter the premises. We've issued three citations for trespass. Uh, that trespass has, requires a court appearance. It will be a class three misdemeanor. And because of that, it carries with it a fine that'll go to the school system and don't come back to the town. Anywhere from two hundred and fifty, um, and not to exceed a thousand dollars. And it can come with a, uh, community service, uh, issue or command or requirement as well. Another issue or citation is for intentionally and recklessly dispose of litter, household trash on property not home, by defendant, not into a litter receptacle as defined in general statutes. And not on property designated by the state for political subdivision therefore, to dispose of garbage and refuse with authorization to use the property for that purpose. We've issued the citation because the camera picked up the vehicle going to this location. That camera alerted our on-duty police officer's cell phone. The on-duty police officer went to the place and basically got the, called the guy, red-handed. He went and asked, what are you doing? He says, well, I'm just getting rid of some trash. It is a violation of general statutes fourteen, three, nine, nine, C. Um, and it too is a class three misdemeanor. It's four bags of garbage, y'all, four bags of garbage. Um, what's interesting to me is that the, the guy that's delivering or getting rid of the four bags of garbage lives outside the city limits, lives outside Cumberland County. Had to get in his vehicle that is improperly registered, also a citation by the way. Um, and display registration number plate noting the same to be fictitious. Drive into Spring Lake to get rid of four bags of garbage. Um, another thing about the environment and upgrading, it's not just upbringing, it's not about crying Indians. But it's also about what your mother always taught you. It only costs a quarter, quarter worth of first class and it's never wrong to do the right thing. Um, I'm glad the efforts of the police department in taking action on this. Um, and so the concern becomes are there being no zealous? I would suggest that I, I mean, it's time to do that. So hopefully next week, we will have order. But in any event, I wanted to highlight the fact that they're there, we're trying to change that behavior. And I know there's no way to change that behavior if we don't change what's happening for the other. And I know there's no way to change that behavior if we don't change what's happening for the other. So with that, that's my opinion.
I hope you all heard that report. We are watching, we are looking for you to do the wrong thing, and we're going to tax you heavily for doing it. Not a small spot on your hand, you're going to court. This could be a real charge. You know somebody who's dumping. I advise you to tell them to stop. Because those guys over there are scary. I don't want them to come and get us. I know you don't want them to get you either. Don't dump, we want our town to be clean, please, just don't dump.
They don't scare me, but I'm glad. You scared me.
Mr. Porter?
I'll agree, I can't remember if I updated the town publicly last time, although I'm sure many of you know. But the flesh trial got continued out again, I can't remember if I updated publicly on that. Yeah, Alan Rogers. So first, the last time, it was because David Corey represents the landowners. I had to have an emergency procedure this time, Alan Rogers, who pretty much all of us know. I don't know what his health issue is, but had a health issue that he had to take a little bit of a timeout. So it should be the first week of May as of now. I will tell you that they requested a 60-day continuance anticipating that they still might not be well. And prayers, thoughts and prayers to them, I have no idea what they did. The trial court administrator only gave 30 days. So in all likelihood, I'm anticipating that as we get closer to it, they'll request another continuance. And whatever he's going through, hopefully he makes us speed to recovery so we can properly litigate this case. That's it.
With that being said, I wanted to take a motion to go into closed session for someone in CGS. Did you have someone else? CGS 143318-11A3-35 privilege. CGS 143318-11A4 economic development. And CGS 143318-11A6 personal development. Commissioner Thompson? Commissioner Chadwick? Any discussions? All of them? Most you care, thank you all for coming outside. I do have the other points. But again, thank you guys for coming, celebrating a great amount in two weeks.